Trina, it's seven, so I'll start the recording whenever you're ready.
Okay, I am ready. Okay, good evening. The July 13th meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Here.
Councilman Dixon is absent. Councilman Legati?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
Councilman Zambrana?
Phil, you're still muted.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Mayor, we have five present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, and forwarding of a copy of the same to official Borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starlager Publishing Companies on January 9th, 2020. Renewal access to this meeting via teleconference was submitted on July 9th. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings, and after the agenda scheduled matters has been completed, the Borough Clerk will give instructions for how public can participate.
Thank you. Next, we will have a moment of silence followed by a salute to our flag. The flag is behind me and behind Councilman Legati, but we'll start with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next on the agenda, we have comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on the resolutions, please follow the clerk's instructions and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda.
If you wish to make a comment during this time, you can raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone, pressing Option-Y, Alt-Y on your PC or Mac, or using the Raise Hand in your app or on the choice on your computer. We'll give you a few minutes to see if anybody raised their hand. I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will move on to the bill list. Will the clerk please read the Bill Resolution 20-122?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $2,448,735.82.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Will this resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, a second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon? Absent. Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have five ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have reports of standing committees and introduction of resolutions. A consent resolution has been prepared to cover the resolutions listed on the agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. None? Okay. So then, will the clerk please, sorry, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, whereas Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk would be approved without the necessity of having individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Will this resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, a second by Councilman Peretti. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon is absent. Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have five ayes.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to reports of committees. The first on the list is Department of Finance Administration and Planning, Councilman Phil Zambrana.
Madam Mayor, I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the Department of Public Safety, Councilman Nick Legati.
Madam Mayor, I have no report tonight.
Okay. Next, we have the Department of Utilities, Councilman, Council President Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the month of June, the Utility Department had the following work: 52 daily station checks, 30 substation checks, and 35-plus utility markouts. Water samples, disinfectant residual testing was performed on June 3rd, 10th, and 17th. All results were satisfactory. Lead and copper sampling. Lead and copper sampling was completed in June. Forty samples were taken from a pre-approved pool of roughly 65 registered sites, which fall into the DEP's sampling criteria. The 90th percentile value was 21.3 parts per billion, which was above the action level of 15 parts per billion for lead. Information on lead can be found on the Borough's website and also in the Consumer Confidence Reports, which were mailed out in June. For the electrical utility, various electric meters were replaced. Six streetlights were repaired. Ongoing maintenance of the overhead wiring has resumed and several deficiencies repaired. Several spans of secondary wiring were re-tensioned. Tree trimming was performed around primary and secondary wires in several locations. Station maintenance was performed. For the water department, curb stops were located for various customers. Several sections of sewer line were cleaned and inspected with a robotic camera. Hydrant flushing was completed to remove sediment from the piping and ensure that the hydrants are functioning and ready for emergencies. Preparations were done at the water tower for the painting project. As always, the Utility Department works hand-in-hand with the Utility Billing Department to ensure accurate utility charges. We troubleshoot faulty meters and work very hard to resolve any billing issues that occur. A reminder to all residents, if you have a water, sewer, or electric emergency, you can call Milltown Police Dispatch at 732-828-2100, extension zero, for service at any time. For non-emergency situations like reporting a streetlight out or a leaking fire hydrant, you can call the Utility Office at 732-828-2100, extension 137. Or you can now report non-emergency problems on the Borough website. If you have a question about water or electric service or your water or electric bill, please call 732-828-2100, extension 183. That concludes the utility report, but I do have one other thing. PAC 33 Cub Scouts and Troop 33 Boy Scouts will hold a drive-through food drive, rain or shine, on July 19th, 11:00 a.m. till 2:30 p.m. in support of the United Methodist Church pantry. Drive through the back parking lot of the United Methodist Church at 47 North Main Street, Milltown, New Jersey. Our scouts will collect your donations from you via a window or your trunk. Some of the most needed items are mayonnaise, beans, canned or bagged, pasta, pasta sauce, oatmeal, cookie or brownie mix, syrup, pancake mix, Chef Boyardee, cooking oil, stuffing, canned vegetables, canned tuna, canned chicken. Non-food items that are needed are diapers, any size, baby wipes, shampoo, conditioner, body lotion, toilet paper, and paper towels. If you have any questions regarding drop-off during or after the event, email us at PAC33Cubs@gmail.com or text SANDYGILROY at 908-803-2618. And I'll repeat that, that's for Sandy Gilroy, at 908-803-2618. And that concludes my report for tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. What day was that?
That was on July 19th, I believe that's next Saturday, 11:00 a.m. till 2:30 p.m.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the Department of Public Works, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer, and Recycling. Sorry, Anna Newbauer. Good evening.
Tonight's report includes, along with all curbside collections, DPW has the following report. Painting of the senior center meeting room has been completed. A bench was installed, and birdhouses were also installed at the library. The DPW cleaned and sanitized the library and Borough Hall prior to opening to the public. Road repairs to Byer Ave and Bernhard Road have been completed, closing two water main brick jobs. Clay Street drainage project is progressing and will be ongoing until completion. Boost boards at the footbridge have been refastened, and sign repair has taken place at Paradaun, North Main, Chesna, and East Lawrence. The annual recycling tonnage report has been completed and submitted to the state. A tree at Herbert and North Main has been trimmed of dead and dangerous limbs. Baseball fields have been worked on in order to prep for the July 11th opening day. Outfall pipe cleaning and maintenance and catch basin labeling and maintenance has been ongoing to comply with the stormwater regulations. Street sweeping is ongoing, street line painting is ongoing. Brush entries have been removed from behind the historical society. And this week is concrete pickup, so please call extension 187 to put your address on the list for collection. Please check Channel 15 and MilltownNJ.org for any other DPW updates. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services. Would anybody have a report, or no? And Councilman Dixon's absent. Okay, if not, then we'll just move along to the Department of Recreation, Councilman James Peretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Short report tonight. Just wanted to communicate from the Rec Department that due to the reduction in hours, they are continuing to check emails and phone messages throughout the week. They just want to say thank you and in advance, appreciate any understanding while they are working to get back to the public. If anyone does have any questions, please don't hesitate to continue calling or sending emails. Someone will get back to you as soon as they can. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to our Administrator Report. Jeanette Larison?
I have no report tonight, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Next, we have our Engineer Report. Lou, Mike, who's on deck tonight?
Good evening. How are you? Yes, good evening, everyone. Just a short report tonight. As you know, based upon the resolutions that were adopted earlier, we have recommended a ward for the Tracy Drive project. Turns out it's over 10% below our estimate. We're pleased to report on that. The contractor is anxious to get going right away. We should see a pre-construction meeting in the next several weeks and get the project underway. Hopefully, the bulk of work can be done before school starts. As Council President Farkas indicated, the tank restoration is underway. We hope to have the tank filled up by at least the end of the weekend or the end of the week, hopefully before the weekend. Work has proceeded. They worked there yesterday, that Sunday. I was there Saturday. They hadn't worked because they were concerned about the weather, but they were Sunday, working inside that park. So pleased the way the progress is going. We haven't held up with rain, obviously, but it should be back filled up by hopefully this weekend. So that's the highlights, other than obviously if there's a question on the Wilson Avenue, introduction ordinance.
Any questions for the engineer?
Yes, I have one, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Hey, Mike?
Yes.
Mike, do you know what the estimated completion of the tank project is going to be?
As I said, if we fill it up by the end of this weekend, what we have not done is the logo yet. The logo hasn't been done because we have to take the, in order to get up to the top of the tank, they had to put in steel scaffolding. Scaffolding is up against the pole. Scaffolding has to be removed, and then we come in and put the logo on. Depending on weather condition, may have to drop the, level the tank a little bit, but we'll do our best to put that back into the system if that happens. But right now, probably another couple of weeks, I'd say.
Thank you, Mike.
So Mike, I have a question. Actually, it's for you and maybe some of the council people that I got from a resident. When there's issues with the curbs on someone's street, if the curbs are crumbling, what do residents do to report that, or how does the Borough address that?
Well, I'll handle it unless Councilwoman Newbauer wants to do it. I can certainly give you what historically is done.
Okay.
Historically, Milltown has taken the position that those curbs and sidewalks are owned by the residents. So that unless there's a work project, for example, like Tracy Drive, you're in the process of doing a milling and resurfacing partial reconstruction, you're doing the curb, taking trees out, generally the homeowners are expected to do those repairs.
Gotcha. Okay. I knew the sidewalk. I wasn't sure about the curb, so thanks for clarifying that. Appreciate it. Okay. If no other questions, we will move on to our Attorney Report. Peter Vignolo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know that I'm in the process of putting together an ordinance for a human relations committee within the Borough. I'm optimistic I'll have that ready for the council's consideration at our meeting in August. And that is all I have.
That's all you have. Any questions about that from anyone in the council? So Pete, that'll be ready for first reading at the next one, and then we'll adopt it subsequent to that?
First reading in August, second reading in September, and then most likely you will be looking at starting to appoint people to it in your October meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You got it. Thank you.
Okay, next, we move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 20-1487 by title only?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real property of Portion 51 Janic Court, Block 69, Lot 19.01, by the Borough of Milltown.
You've heard the reading of this ordinance. What's your pleasure?
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, August?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth at 7:00 p.m. in Council Chambers in Borough Hall.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Legati, second by, I can't tell whose voice that was. Sorry. Who was that? Oh, okay. Council President Farkas. Will the clerk, oh, any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon is absent. Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Yeah, I'm muted, Anna.
Yeah, the little, the spacebar didn't work. Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have five ayes.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 20-1488 by title, please?
Calendar year 2020, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A, colon, 45.1.
You've heard the reading of this ordinance. What is your pleasure?
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in Council Chambers in Borough Hall.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Legati, a second by Council President Farkas. Any questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon is absent. Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have five ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have the Budget Resolution. Will the clerk please read Resolution 20-135 by title?
Municipal budget notice.
Thank you. So how are we doing this? Are we just, is this, are we just voting on this like a regular, I mean, doing a motion like a regular resolution?
No, I think there's a presentation.
Right, so that's what I, so, oh, Jeanette, you're up.
Oh, yeah, yes, we're gonna have a presentation. Gabby will get that up.
Okay, thank you.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, so the 2020 budget being introduced tonight was created with input and oversight of the Finance Committee, which consists of, chaired by Councilman Phil Zambrana, and Council President Randy Farkas and Nick Legati. Next slide, please. The objectives and goals of our budget include creating not only a balanced budget, which is statutorily required, but a fair budget as well. And that would be a budget that doesn't include unnecessary appropriations, basically just by not over-budgeting. We also plan for the future by creating reserves for obligations and liabilities, such as a storm trust or snow removal fund, accumulated leave balances, monies that need to be paid to outgoing retiring employees, and also unemployment funding, which is especially important right now considering the pandemic and the, you know, the level of unemployment that exists. We also include funding for down payments for capital expenditures. Next slide, please. So where do our taxes go? So as depicted by this graph, the overall tax rate is comprised of multiple taxing authorities. So we have the Board of Education, we have the library, Middlesex County, and the county open space taxes, along with ours. The municipal portion makes up about 24% of the entire levy that the Borough is charged with collecting. Next slide, please. The operating budget is comprised of appropriations and revenues. So the appropriations are broken down into salaries and wages, other expenses, and then contractual obligations such as health care benefits in addition to utility expenses, and then statutory expenses such as pension obligations, and finally debt service. The balance side of this is the revenues, which is comprised of our local revenue. So that's, we collect through fees and fines. We have grants that offset appropriations for their purpose. We have amounts raised through taxation, so that would be the taxable portion. And then finally, your state aid and energy receipts tax. That helps to offset the amount collected through taxation. Next slide, please. So those appropriations are to pay for the expenses that are incurred by Milltown, and those expenses correlate to the services that we provide to our residents, such as police protection, DPW functions for garbage collection, roads, park maintenance, construction, zoning permitting, code enforcement, and then also provides for funding for any services that are outsourced, such as recycling, a collection, and animal control. And then we also provide some financial assistance to our volunteer services, which include the emergency medical services and fire protection. Next slide, please. So here is a snapshot of our appropriations, basically from 2019 to 2020. You'll see that there are some changes. Most of them are modest. There are a couple that are slightly higher or lower. So one, in particular, one that stands out would be utilities. And the reason for this sharp increase is not an expense increase, but as I have gone through the budget, as a budgeting tool, some of the utilities were spread out among different accounts, so they've been consolidated. So they may have been represented in years' span under different headings. We've just consolidated them. It helps to make budgeting easier and also for bill payment. Also, you see that our pension obligation for our employees decreased slightly by about $18,000 over last year's cost. And then our reserve for uncollected taxes, which is a non-spending appropriation, that is based on the collection rate of the previous year. So unfortunately, our collection rate went down slightly, so we had to increase the amount that we have to keep in reserve for that because the, although the school and the county that we collect taxes for, we are responsible for giving them 100% of the collections, regardless of how much we actually collect. So this reserve offsets any decrease in collections, so that we have that money on hand to make those payments. So our overall appropriation side of the budget has decreased. Again, we have to realize that we are in a pandemic, and therefore, some decreases to the budget appropriation side are a direct result of this, especially for the Departments of Recreation and Senior Services. Those appropriations have been reduced due to program cancellation, closures, and revenue losses associated with that. Next slide. So on the other side of the appropriations, you have your revenues. Again, the, like the appropriations, these are the anticipated revenues for 2020 have also been impacted as a result of COVID-19. Swimming pool fees, you'll see, obviously, we're not anticipating any because our pool is closed. You'll also see a decrease in recreation anticipated collections because we have no anticipated collections, um, because we have no programs going on right now. We've only had about one quarter of the year that ha- saw any programming. We're hoping, you know, maybe at some point before the end of the year, we'll get something else put together. But our budget is based on the factors that we know, and we know what we've lost. And so the revenues are, um, paint that picture for us. The local purpose tax, which is also the amount to be collected by taxation, ha- it shows an increase of about two point six percent. Um, this is the amount that will affect your tax bills. Next slide, please. Also within the budget, we have our sub-budgets or our utilities, which is water and sewer. Um, and we also have electric. So the water and sewer budget is three million eight hundred ten thousand. We are self-liquidating, which means basically that we don't have to provide for a down payment should we, um, incur any debt or do capital improvements. Our budget is supported by revenues collected through water and sewer rents and ancillary by water and sewer connection fees, which obviously are a, a very small part of that. They support operations, uh, such as, um, all the general expenses, pays for the employees. That includes clerical, meter readers, maintenance. We are required to have a licensed operator, uh, to service. This is required by law. Um, so we don't have one on hand, but we do outsource that. We have debt service that is associated with the water sewer utility. And then it, we also have to pay for our bulk water purchases and for the sewer treatment, which is provided by the city of New Brunswick. Next slide, please. The electric utility, same situation. We have a budget of seven million five hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars. It is self-liquidating. Their budget is supported through the collection of rents. They cover general expenses, employees. Again, same situation, clerical, meter readers, and maintenance. It pays for the debt service and it covers the cost of the energy bulk, uh, bulk energy purchases that we make in order to supply it to our residents. Next slide, please. In summary, the proposed, uh, general operating budget contains a tax increase, which is going to amount to about sixty-one dollars per average assessed property. The average assessed property value is a hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and seven dollars. We don't foresee any reductions in municipal services, and we are anticipating some infrastructure improvements, including, uh, road improvements that are, uh, funded through, uh, DOT grants that we obtain. The water sewer utility budget, there is no rate increase proposed for twenty twenty, nor any reduction in any services that you'll receive. And the same for the electric utility budget, where there is no rate increase that is anticipated and no reductions in any services. That concludes the presentation. This introduction, um, of the budget is, um, you know, in a, in a, on August seventeenth, we'll be doing the, um, adoption, which will have a public portion for comments. Um, but certainly if there are any questions from the governing body, we can entertain those now.
Thank you very much, Jeanette. Um, I also, uh, failed to point out until I looked at the screen that we do have our auditor, Mr. Hodjelik with us, and also our, uh, tax collectors off, uh, ke- tax collector Kelly is with us as well because, um, there were some questions about the estimated bill. So I appreciate both of them, um, joining us tonight in case there are any questions from the, the governing body. So we'll open it up to any questions. For Jeanette and/or the Finance Committee. No? None?
Questions?
Okay. Wow. Okay. Uh, then seeing no questions, we will move on to, hold on a second. I gotta get my, my agenda up. Move on to old business. Any old business that the council would like to bring before?
Need to have a vote on the introduction, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Hodjelik. Appreciate it. Um. You've, uh, heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
That this resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Legati, second by Council President Farkas. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, uh, very quickly, uh, a big thank you to the members of the Finance Committee. Um, as you can see, it's a tough year. Um, we have gone, uh, the distance on this. Um, we stopped the bleeding. The bleeding, it's not done. The patient hasn't healed yet, but we did the best we could to stop the bleeding.
Gabrielle, we got some interference here. Thank you.
That's all. We're broadcasting to, uh, Venezuela. That's okay. Um, but again, just a thank you to the Finance Committee, and a big thank you to Jeanette. She did an excellent job. Thank you to Andy for all his assistance. And, uh, again, all the members of the Finance Committee did an excellent job. So my thanks to all of them.
My apologies. I'm trying to keep up with-
I just wanna, I wanna confirm. We can, as, uh, council people, we can remove people as well that are making inappropriate comments, correct?
Yes, you should. I view, as co-hosts, you should be able to, if you can click them faster than me, to remove them or to mute them. I apologize.
It's in the chat too, Gabrielle.
You're muted, Randy.
You have to unmute.
Uh, top right-hand corner of your screen, just hover your mouse over it and unmute. There you go.
How's that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Aye.
Councilman Dixon is absent. Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have five ayes.
Thank you. Now, we can move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business they wish to bring before us this evening? Seeing none, I will now move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business they would like to discuss this evening? Seeing none, I will open it up for audience comments. Let me read the, if any member of the audience, uh, wishes to speak, um, please follow the instructions by the clerk and, uh, state your name and address for the record.
If you'd like to make a comment to the council- If you'd like to make a comment to council, you can, um, raise it by pressing star nine, option Y or alt Y on your Mac or PC, click the raise hand button, um, or you can choose raise hand through the ellipses. I have removed that person. Courtney Williams?
Hi, oh, um, Courtney Williams, three eighteen Clay Street. Um, at the council meeting on June seventeen, members Farkas, um, and Legati spoke, um, about taking a personal and collective stance against racism. And then on June nineteenth, um, Mayor Trina reiterated and committed to being anti-racist. And most recently, council members Zambrana intended, um, you know, Saturday's demonstration. Can I ask what the council has planned to address how Milltown is working on becoming a community that truly embodies anti-racism while promoting diversity and inclusion for all past the development of the HRC Council? Um, you know, I, as a resident, have and continue to experience and witness acts of racism and discrimination in and around town. And I not only worry about my citizens, who are vulnerable to these acts because of their race, gender, sexuality, and religion. Um, and you know, I'm also worried for people who speak up and solidarity and support.
Um, does anyone of, when the council want to speak first and then I'll go or?
Well, I'll, I'll start off with that, uh, like I said at the previous council meeting, that, uh, any, any, any form of racism should not be tolerated in, in our borough and our community. Um, it's a terrible thing, what has happened to us, um, a little divide that we're having right now. Um, racism should not be, uh, tolerated on any level, and we will do anything and everything that the law provides us to do to keep it out of our town or not to, uh, anticipate it from happening again. Um, I, I am very sorry for what has happened in the past, but, uh, I know that our police department and everyone in town i- is trying to get a better, uh, Milltown going and, and a better understanding, a better learning, uh, curve for all of us. And I know that the mayor is, uh, working with the borough attorney on getting our human, uh,
Relations Committee.
Relations, uh, committee squared away, and we've already started the process of that as well. So I, I'm hoping that that, uh, helps with anything that is going on in town and that in the future, we don't have any more incidents uh, like the one we've had in the past.
Madam Mayor, I'll chime in. Um, and Courtney, thank you for, um, voicing your concerns tonight. The, like Nick said and echoing what a lot of sentiment has been said, you're right, racism doesn't have any place in our town. Um, you know, Milltown is nicknamed the greatest little town on earth, and it's not Milltown for some. It should be Milltown for everyone. So we're doing our best. Um, and I hope it's, um, the beginning of the ripple effect through town and through spheres of influence that there's more dialogue and more open communication about this. Um, it really wasn't discussed on council meetings previously. So this is historic, like June nineteenth event at Borough Park, historic event again. So, um, I really am proud of the community grassroots efforts that's being promoted. And I'm really excited as the council, um, through the Human Resource Committee and other just, uh, community events to get involved as much as possible. Um, and to, to your point about people speaking up, um, there certainly there is never a perfect world and there's always going to be people who are unfortunately on probably the wrong side of history on certain things, but Martin Luther King said, um, "It's not the voices of our enemy, but the silence of our friends." And I think that reson- resonates really perfectly at this time, um, that for those who should speak up or can speak up, should speak up. And I hope that everyone, you know, as part of the council and the community can do that and support to make this town as great as it could be.
Thank you, James and Nick. Um, so I will just echo, uh, some of the things that they said. Of course, the, uh, Borough of Milltown denounces racism. We, uh, there's no, uh, equivocation on that. Uh, you know, we, we're disappointed with incidents that have occurred. We are going to move forward and, you know, work with the public to get suggestions from you. That's, that's the reason for the Human Relations Committee, is to have suggestions on ways to heal our community, for us to all, um, work together harmoniously so that everyone, um, feels safe. And so, and, and also to say that, you know, the council, uh, has, uh, supported, we, we went to the, the rally. I wasn't able to go to the march this past Saturday, but, you know, we're kept informed. And if there's anything, you know, if anyone feels threatened or has any harassment, I, I know that our, our police department has, uh, has followed up on any reports that they have gotten, uh, regarding any, um, racist incidents, and they will, they will continue to do so as well.
Yes, um, I'm sorry, Trina, but, uh, I had forgot to mention, um, uh, every time the police chief gives me a report, um, he is always very direct in saying that the Milltown Police Department operates in best practices to make sure that everyone is serviced in the same manner and that they are contingent about being an accredited police department. And I, I give them a lot of credit for that. And I want everyone to know that our police department is one of the best in New Jersey and that everyone should feel safe here and that they do the job the best way possible for everybody, no matter what.
And, thank you, Nick. And what I will say is that, you know, it's, so the Human Relations Committee, um, we have to go through the process. So I brought it up to our borough attorney, who is crafting one that will work, um, for us. There's the, we have several examples and, you know, the, the one thing about, uh, government is it's not, um, quick moving. So we have to go through a process. We have to develop an ordinance. Then we have to have a first reading, as you saw tonight, of that ordinance and a second reading. Um, but in the meantime, I hope that the, the grassroots people who, you know, feel passionate about that will still continue to do what they're doing. And then once this gets off the ground as, as soon as we possibly can, that will be another way for all members of the community to ha- keep discussing this, um, you know, very important issue that, um, you know, we know that many people, uh, have concerns about. And, you know, certainly as the mayor and council, we are in the meantime, before the actual committee is formed, we are certainly open to, uh, you know, hear from anyone that has any concern.
If I could just add, the reason we have to go through the process is because we want to make sure to do it right. If we do it right, that way no one can come back to us and say that we're doing it wrong. That's why we go through the whole process. And also you can always come to us if you feel uncomfortable. Uh, all of our contact information is listed on the Borough website. So if you feel like something extraordinarily terrible is going on, please point it out to us so we can help it, help you find the best route of addressing it.
Thank you. Sorry, I was unable to be unmuted. I had to wait for that. Um, thank you for your answers and your open support and, you know, your open door. Um, I hope that between now and the development of the ca- um, you know, the committee and, or I guess council, that, um, the Town Council can, um, you know, put forward some, you know, ideas in the meantime and continue to work, um, and get that work really going before the development of that committee actually takes place in October and later.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have Sally Miller. Ms. Miller, you are unmuted.
Can you turn my video back on? It seems like it's been, uh, now, we can't do it until you allow it. It looks like all the video is turned off for people. And we are unable to start-
For, uh, anybody who is not on council, but I can restart it if you give me one.
It says you can't start your video because the host has stopped it.
I understand that.
Okay, perfect. Hi, everybody.
Hi. Hey, how are you?
It's so nice to, uh, see you all. And I just want to first thank everyone. I am, I think that the Financial Committee did such a great job with, you know, being able to understand the budget and, you know, as a resident and a business owner, um, it was really great to see that. So I just really want to thank you. And also I want to thank you, Mayor, for everything that you have said and shown up and promised to do. And it's really encouraging. You know, as a resident who, um, has been at both, I didn't get a chance to go to the march this past week as much, as long as I could, but I, I feel very strongly that- but I, I feel very strongly that, um, and feel encouraged by what everybody's been saying. So I have, um, a couple of things I'd like to ask as far as timeline goes. Is there, uh, the first question is, is there a timeline with the HRC? And how, can you give a little bit more information about process so that there's accountability with the timeline so we feel all comfortable with that?
Sure, sure, I can do that since I was the one that prompted it and, and our borough attorney can, um, chime in as well. So, uh, after, um, we had a report of a racist incident in Milltown back in May, um, I had reached out to, uh, the resident, you know, and, and spoke about, you know, what can, I'm the mayor, I want to hear what's going on. I offered to meet with whomever, um, you know, would like to come and speak to me if they felt marginalized, unsafe. Uh, subsequent to that, I know that a group has formed in town to address, um, the incident as well as, uh, you know, other things that have occurred, you know, throughout town and throughout the, the country. And I was approached to, um, form an anti-racist task force. I brought that, uh, back to the council and we, uh, came up with the, um, agreement that we would form the Human Relations Committee because that addresses, uh, the full scale of people, uh, interacting together. So it would be race, ethnicity, religion, um, sexual orientation. And, uh, we sort of, uh, the borough attorney and I have looked at other towns, almost all the other towns in, um, Middlesex County have a Human Relations Committee and are trying to mirror the, the setup of it. Um, there's some that have more people, some that have, um, you know, a, a group that are may appointed by the mayor and council. They also have a clergy member, a representative from the school, perhaps a student. So there's, there's a various mix that once we adopt this and pass the ordinance, then we will ask for people to fill out a citizen leadership application, just like you would for any other committee that we have in the borough. You know, we have the Green Team, we have Environmental Commission, so anything that is asking for volunteers will come. The timeline, as Mr. Vignolo pointed out, is, uh, at our next council meeting in August, we will have that on as an ordinance, which if the council, um, adopts that ordinance, then it goes back for a second reading and then we'll be back to two meetings a month in September. So it'll be sometime in September that it's passed and then we can ask for, uh, people who are interested to submit their citizen leadership application and, um, uh, you know, then form the, the committee, which the idea of the committee, from what I've seen examples and where, you know, hopefully it will go is the council, they will, it will be advisory to the mayor and council. It can be educational in nature. It can also be, you know, uh, keep us informed on, you know, so it's, it's basically what I envision is it's coming from the ground up. You know, there's, there's a, a number of issues that are probably, um, we may not be aware of and, and hopefully it will be a, a committee that will liaise with the mayor and council to, uh, you know, keep us informed and also to, you know, let us know what, what are some ideas that people are concerned about, would like to, um, you know, bring to the, to our attention. So that's, that's whereby I would imagine that sometime in September, um, that will occur.
I appreciate that. I have a question. Is there, when there is something like this that gets formed, are there policies so that if this happens or a process so that there is a, um, say that there's a complaint that something happened that was a hate crime? Does it go in that direction where there's a process and policy put through or is this completely separate? It's like an advisory board has nothing to do with that.
It's advisory. If it's a hate crime or, or anything with a, a crime or harassing nature, that would go to the police.
That goes to the police. Okay, perfect. And, um, this is on a side note, completely changing the subject for a minute. You know, I had done some research and I know I talked to you about it at some point. I just don't know what the process is. I know like 10 years ago, there was a, a try at removing the sign that, um, there was a sign that was, uh, put up prior probably, um, to this particular Nazi sympathizer, Peyton. And I've done some research to find out that there's two houses living on the block in Milltown and that in fact, he was tried for treason for, um, working with Hitler and responsible for so much antisemitism and, and I, uh, many, many deaths, uh, sent to the, to the camps, the German camps. I, I know that in France where he's from, all of the street signs have been taken down and there's very few places, if any, in the United States. And we happen to have a town that's forming an anti-racist and a HRC commission, yet we still have this sign, uh, this street sign. As somebody who's Jewish and first moved here with my children, um, you know, just as a purely a resident, I was pretty surprised that they were having soccer practices and tournaments during Yom Kippur and didn't have the understanding and didn't change any of the dates. It was probably too late. But, um, coming now from a very different perspective with so much awareness and understanding of where we sit and racism in general, and as this group is starting to form with the HRC of like what you described as being for everyone, I felt like maybe this was not planned for me to talk about it, but I'll talk about it. Uh, what is the process from, you know, from a citizen's point of view to, to start this process of having this, um, uh, street sign changed and?
It's a street, it's a, and it's actually the name of the street. So I, I believe that sometime several years ago, it came before the council because somebody, some, a student from East Brunswick brought it, um, to the council. And, um, you know, obviously it's still there. So, uh, you know, I wasn't around on the council then, so I don't know what happened. But what I will tell you was that it's come up to me several times and the, um, Honor Society of Joyce Kilmer's eighth grade, uh, did a PowerPoint presentation and were going to come and present this very topic about the name change, proposing other names. They had a, a wonderful presentation put together that we had on, uh, it was going to be an agenda item at a meeting in the end of March. So unfortunately, because of the COVID, um, closures, we didn't get their presentation. We, I actually, um, have talked to Phil, who's the liaison to the Board of Ed, um, and we were going to follow up with the president of the Board of Education to see where that stands and if the, the students that are probably graduated from eighth grade would be still interested in presenting that to the council or if it's going to turn into a project for the students that are joining to the Honor Society in September. So, you know, we didn't want to take away their spirit and thunder and since they worked really hard on it and had a really nice presentation, hopefully that will come sometime soon before, um, the council. So, so stay tuned. That's, uh, that's something that it was a, a victim of, uh, the COVID, but it's, it's still, um, somewhere in the background and, and it will come up again.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you.
Next we have Megan Geyer.
Pronounced it correctly. Thank you. This is Megan Geyer on that 29 Highland Drive. Uh, I have a couple of questions if you'll bear with me, some not related to the others. First, in regards to the HRC, I am curious how members of an HRC are chosen and who chooses them?
Uh, so the members, it's the members will, uh, as I said, put their people, anyone from the public is welcome to put in a citizen, uh, leadership application and then it's chosen or appointed by the mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. And then unrelated to that, I was curious, I had a couple of questions about the budget presentation, but I'm not sure if those are appropriate for this meeting or if that's for open public discussion next meeting.
That's a good question. Jeanette, what do you think? I don't have a good answer.
Budget really, it's not a public discussion tonight. Would have to be, uh, the meeting on the 17th of August.
Okay, if I had some questions, uh, to be prepared ahead of that meeting, because I realize you guys are voting on it in that next meeting, who would I point those questions to?
So if you, if you have, if you have specific questions, you can feel free to contact me at the office. If you had just general comments, you know, it depends on, uh, you know, it depends on what questions you had. So, you know, you could feel free to contact me anytime and we can have a discussion.
So that'll be the, the, uh, the next meeting is the first reading of the budget or we're adopting the budget?
That we're adopting on August 7th.
So if you could, the borough, uh, our BA CFO or alternatively to the Finance Committee, Councilman Zambrana is the chair of the Finance Committee. So you could also reach out to him and everyone's address is on the, um, the website.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. And Megan, I just wanted to follow up about the question about the, um, the, uh, the committee. So as, uh, I've spoken to people and they wonder about, you know, being appointed, I, I will point out that it's important to have a, um, a good diversity of thought in the committee as well. So it would, ideally, it would be, um, people with, uh, you know, various experiences throughout the town that would be, um, appointed to that committee that could then further, um, you know, lead discussions with other members of the, uh, community. So that they, it would be, um, people throughout the town who have various, uh, opinions about things. We, you know, we would have a, a group, you know, this committee, but that wouldn't just be, you know, seven or, or nine people, you know, making all the decisions. They would obviously get input from the, uh, from the community at large. But thanks for the question.
Looks like Megan's, uh, muted.
That's, yeah, okay, I see that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your response, Trina. And I know you did explain that, uh, for instance, in East Brunswick, they have, um, members of the Chamber of Commerce, a representative from the police department, um, a member of the Board of Education. So that sounds really great. Thank you for the explanation.
And that's, that's what the borough attorney and has been, you know, working on. So that, that's look, uh, tune in in August and we'll have that, um, ready to present.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all that I had.
Thank you.
Next we have Katie Velez.
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Mayor Trina and the council for hearing our comments and questions. And thank you for, you know, the update on the HRC committee. I'm looking forward to that being put together. I'm a little concerned however, because I am hearing, um, some, some of you mentioned the racial incident that happened in Milltown as if that were, um, Milltown's, you know, wow, that was our first event that happened. And, um, I know that we need to go by what the police report and what people report, but I think historically, um, there have been many, many events in Milltown. As a business owner and as a parent, um, I am concerned for safety. Just even the hacking of this council meeting concerns me for our safety. And I think, um, as a person of color, as a, as a black person, um, I know that my fears and my concerns may not necessarily be palatable to someone who doesn't experience that on a, on a regular basis. And so I'm saying to you, while you may feel, um, safe and secure, I don't. And, you know, there are things that have happened that have concerned me for my, my children, that concern me as a resident. My neighbor told me recently that there was a car in our parking lot at two o'clock in the morning, just sitting in our parking lot. I can't say that that was a racist event, but it was a strange occurrence. While walking my dogs, um, into Borough Park, there was a car that came, you know, flying towards me and there was no one else in the park. So I thought, did I just imagine that or did this car just literally drive straight towards me and around me and my dog and back out of, out of the park? There are, there are strange things happening all over our nation. I think we need to take note and, um, not be overly secure that we are okay here. I've already been harassed by people from Milltown, um, and we can say, ah, brush it off, you know, it's not a big deal, but those things concern me for my safety as to how far is someone willing to go to make their point known and to get their point across? You know, are they going to sit in my lot while my husband wakes up and leaves for work at four in the morning? Is he going to be ambushed? Are, are my kids going to be hurt purposely? These are real concerns for me. So I appreciate the, the organization of the HRC committee, but I think, um, because Milltown has a history, I don't think it's so far in history that we can say that was then and this is now and the one event, it's not the one event, there are many events. The people who came to the rally for June 19th, as well as the people who attended the march are all people who have a story to tell. And I think it's our responsibility to hear those stories from our residents who've been here double the time as me, who have stories of cross burnings, who have stories of being denied entrance to the borough pool because they were black. And this is our history, you know? Milltown is a wonderful place. That's why we're here. That's why we invested here. But there is a dark history here that people are well aware of. And I think that is what we're asking you to address is how, how do we keep everyone safe and how do we help everyone feel secure, um, in this tense racial climate right now?
So I will say that, you know, correction, the, uh, recent incident. I will ask, uh, if you have felt unsafe and you've had these incidents with the car, have you reported them to the police?
Well, that particular incident, like I said, I didn't want to be paranoid. You know, it was like I'm going for a walk and it happened. Um, the car, I asked my neighbor, you know, did you see, what did you see? And, you know, they're young college students, so they didn't think to get license plate or description. But I'm telling you, these are things that now we have to look back and say, was it just not a big deal? Was it just somebody making a U-turn in my lot? Or was it, was it something, uh, more sinister? And so?
So, and I, I think that it's hard to track unless we, you know, report it to the police. So I, you know, I will say that we want every, everyone to feel safe and secure here at home and in Milltown. You know, with going forward, that's, that's part of the reason to develop a committee is that we can, you know, um, promote harmony within our borough. Uh, you know, unfortunately, we as mayor and council can move forward and see what we can do to address this, that we cannot go back, uh, based on stories of what happened in the past.
Well, I did report the harassment that I received via text and email and I do have a court, um, hearing scheduled for that. It was rescheduled to a, a date that we're still waiting for that date.
The Milltown Police investigated that, correct?
The Milltown Police investigated that and they did charge both, um, both defendants.
Okay, good. And, uh, so, uh, you know, the, the safety, uh, yeah, I, I guess I would ask what, what would you like the mayor and council to, um, address as far as the, the safety concerns that you have?
Well, for the two, for the two, um, persons who, who did, um, the harassment, you know, I, I, I did write to the prosecutor that they should be prosecuted because the message then if they are not prosecuted- because the message then, if they are not prosecuted, is that it's okay to harass people who are protesting. It's okay to harass and intimidate other or black people. And, uh, it can't be, the message I'm, you know, the messages that I'm seeing is that, you know, sticks and stones, we need to get over these things, you know? They're just words. We need to kind of move on.
Uh, the mayor and council, um, have not said that, has, has the police, then the police did not say that, correct?
They have not, but members of the community have.
Okay, so that's, that's different.
Is that if we don't prosecute, if we don't move to prosecute that type of behavior.
So our borough, Borough Attorney will weigh in on the prosecution.
Wait for one second, which is right now, they are the subject of a criminal complaint, uh, against two individuals. That complaint has not been resolved at all. So while I understand Ms. Velez's, um, ob- obvious concern over these incidents and what's occurred, um, i- it's not necessarily something that would be appropriate for the mayor and council to discuss because they are the subject of a pending criminal matter. So while Ms. Velez is certainly capable of coming to the microphone and saying what she would like as a member of the public, it would not be appropriate for the mayor and council to have a discussion regarding those incidents.
Then I think what we need to do is, is have a town hall at, at some point to have an open discussion about what the community feels about these types of events and how we're gonna keep each other safe as a community together.
Okay, sure. I will take that. And, uh, that would be, uh, that would be something that the mayor and council could, could look into.
Thank you.
Next I have, uh, identified as Dave O.
Yeah, Dave Ernieak, three, two, two, South Main Street. Um, I was just wondering, I, I understand that the mayor and council, that they've spoken out against, uh, racism in our, um, town. But I was wondering if, uh, the Chief of Police and the Milltown Police Department would be issuing any kind of statement, um, you know, discussing how they are, uh, uh, anti-racist as well? Because I, I have a community, uh, organizers saying that they are tired of the, um, NPD calling and asking to calm down the anti-racist movement in town. And that's kind of concerning. I, I was hoping that, um, the chief could actually speak out against, against racism and saying that he is against this stuff. Because it, it's very, it's like, like you all said, it's, it's unacceptable. And that the people at town need to know that the Police Department and the chief are against it as well.
So Dave, I can, I can tell you that our Milltown Police Department is against racism of any sort, any kind whatsoever. Um, the question that you're asking, I can't answer for the Chief of Police, nor would I ever want to answer for the Chief of Police. You should really direct that question directly to the Chief of Police. You can email him or you can leave him a a reasonable amount of time. I think he might have a couple of days vacation this week. But your question, I can't answer, nor would I want to answer for the Chief of Police.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Next I have Dawn Milburn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. Um, huh, how do I put this? I think I just want to speak up as someone who's lived in this town for about fifty years or so old. Um, and listening to some of Katie's comments and understanding some of the events that have happened in her family's life, in Courtney's life, are only two people of color that have spoken tonight on Zoom. And even as a white person having trucks for the first time pull down my street and kind of just sit there and look at my house. I just want you to know that these stories, you know, I know that, that as Milltowners, we're proud of our town, we love our town, I am one of them. However, I just hope that each council member is listening, really truly listening and taking to heart the stories of a few of the people who I think are very patiently and very politely expressing that they're having real-life experiences, some on a daily basis. This is not something we're imagining. And we can't hold council members, of course, for things that go on in social media, but we all, we all, we all have our social media accounts, our personal accounts. And, and it is quite common, as you know for yourselves, because we all are on Facebook at some point or Twitter or something, we are hearing comments constantly, comments like this. Well, if you don't like Milltown, you don't like the way it is, then move to New Brunswick. That's a microaggression. There are so many comments. I have heard that same comment where pastors have been called and asked to please quiet down the people who are trying to fight anti-racism. I've heard another person in town, a very respected member of town, who was, who was a former police officer in another town, say, I wish that we would do what my parents taught me. It's time to move on. It's over. What's over? So it's, it's easy for us to say, we have, we do, I do, I love my Police Department and I love my chief. I have great respect for him and the police officers that serve in Milltown. I have great respect for them. I have had nothing personally, but wonderful experiences with them. Not here, none of us are here that are talking in anti-racism support groups and circles and educational circle. No one is here to say that we do not, that we do not think our policemen are doing a proper job. We're just trying to alert to you that there are many people in town, many who you all know, because you've lived here, some of you as long as me, who are very upset about people organizing to protest discrimination. It is a fact. You all know that. So please, I'm just going to ask you to please listen to people of color who live in our town. Don't listen to me, even though I have people, trucks slowing down in front of my house now. Listen to the people of color. I'm hearing the angst in their voice. They're trying their best. They want to just live, work, live, play, relax. They can't. They have a different experience than many of us do. So I'm just only asking that you could please listen to their stories. Or maybe Mr. Zambrana, who came to the last, uh, who, who came and joined us in the march, maybe he could explain what some of the talks were about in the community, in the park. They were not anti-police talks. I did not attend one talk, one talk that had, that said anything negative about our police officers. We are not anti-police. We invited, I, I, for a personal letter to each of you, I wrote a personal letter to each of the policemen, I wrote a personal letter to the school board members, and I invited them. We wanted you to march with us. We are not anti-police. We are not anti-Milltown. Racism does not have a party. It is not Republican. It is not Democrat. It is not independent. It is not Christian. It is not Jewish. Racism is racism. And I'm going to ask you to please, please listen to the stories, at least of people of color, or look at your Facebook chats and just, just, just take a look at the.
Sorry, I couldn't be there. Uh, as I said earlier, everyone, every single person in Milltown, their safety is of utmost importance to the mayor and council as well as the Police Department. So that is why I mentioned the Police Department, because if someone feels unsafe, if they call me, uh, there's not a lot I can do. It's really the police are the first line of defense for public safety. Um, when you, we, you've mentioned what goes on, on social media or what people say. You know, we sit here as the mayor and council to pass ordinances and resolutions. I, I cannot, um, we cannot legislate what people say. Is it, is it awful to make our neighbors feel unsafe or unwelcome? Yes. If it's harassing and, and they, they feel unsafe or they have people that are driving around or you have people that, uh, you don't feel comfortable with, then, you know, please report it. However, you know, there's nothing, um, it, I, I mean, not, not, nothing. There's, what I can say is we can't legislate for people to treat others with respect. And that is why I'm trying to develop this Human Relations Committee to have a, a, a forum for everyone, uh, to have a voice, whether you're, um, you, you know, feeling marginalized or you're, you're not. It's, it's a, it's a venue for all voices to be heard. In the meantime, of course, we're listening. We hear. Yeah, I, you know, we, there's, there's plenty of other things that go on that we, that we hear also. And we just can't, you know, act on it, but, you know, we, we hear, we're, we're aware. Uh, you know, saddened by a lot of things. But as far as what we can do is, you know, try and bring people together in harmony to, and, and, and work with ways to educate people. And, you know, and, and listen to everyone's, um, opinion and, and try to come up with something that we can address to bring people, um, together and ultimately to feel safe in, in our town.
Trina?
Yes.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I, 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 I will say to you, Trina, that I do believe that you are listening to us. And I want to, I want to thank you for that. I think that from the very beginning, I, I do feel that you are listening. And I'm just, would like to encourage all of us to listen. Thank you very much.
Um, can I just add something really quick? I think, um, I didn't get to march on this past Saturday. I was out of town, but we did try, me and my husband tried to rush home and we did get to make two of the last, um, breakout groups. And one thing is, if you don't feel comfortable calling someone out on social media, something I've been doing in my personal life, and, you know, I can encourage anyone who feels they want to be an anti-racist to do is a call in, and it's not public. You privately reach out to someone that you see that maybe they're having an ignorant thought or not thinking quite through what they're saying. And you call them in and it's different than a call because you're not doing it publicly. You're not like publicly making it a shaming thing. You're trying to educate them on the backside. That is one thing I did learn at one of the breakout groups. And they also sort of touched upon it during the rally.
Thanks.
For the time being, that's something I feel anyone, not just the council, can be doing.
There's currently no one else with their hand raised, Mayor? I don't know if you want to give them another minute to?
It's up, up to you. You're, you're the, uh, you're the moderator.
It doesn't seem like anyone's making a move, but if it was, if you wanted to make a comment, to press star nine, alt Y, option Y, or raise hand, now would be the time to make a comment to council. Uh, there's been no other movement, so.
Then that case, uh, we have, uh, fine. Next up, we have, we'll close audience comments and we will move on to council comments. Anyone?
Mayor, I just have a, one simple comment, comment is that any comments I made tonight were very sincere. If you know me, they are very sincere. They are heartfelt. They are honest. And they are not meant to hurt any one or other person at all. If you take it the wrong way, I apologize. But if you know me, you know that everything I said here tonight was of, of the utmost sincerity to everyone. And, and I couldn't, not want to disrespect anyone whatsoever.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Any other council comments?
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Zambrana.
I'd be remiss, I really should have brought this up earlier, um, in the, uh, in, on the agenda. But I wanted to, uh, give my sincerest thanks to the Milltown Fourth of July Committee for doing what they could to, um, try to make the Fourth of July as normal as possible. Uh, I'd also be remiss if by congratulating the Fourth of July Committee, I also congratulate the Police Department, uh, the Fire Department, the Rescue Squad for all their help, uh, as well as all the volunteers in town who, who did what they could. Um, from sticking the Milltown sign in the middle of Mill Pond to float, uh, to having a patriotic pie contest, to, um, having a virtual Fourth of July presentation, um, and to lighting up the sky at night. Um, it was very nice, uh, in, especially at a time like this. And I just wanted to give my thanks to them.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? So I will second thanking Mr. Potter and the entire, uh, Fourth of July organization. They, uh, you know, did a great job of making lemonade out of lemons. I know the Milltown sign seemed to be a big hit. And, you know, we appreciate everyone that, that helped out with that, all of their, uh, efforts. It was, you know, not what we had hoped for, but it turned out to be nice. And, you know, with that, I will say that, um, I, as mayor, understand that, you know, things have gotten tense. We are in the middle of an unprecedented time with a pandemic, with unrest. We have, um, you know, people at home. We've had to change things. I will say that, you know, I, I thank all of the Borough employees for doing a, a phenomenal job throughout this, what is it going on? Four months now that we've, uh, been under emergency operations. Uh, things tend to be magnified. And what I have advised is, you know, whatever is going on in town or whatever changes that we, we look to make, even changes that we had when we all started here in January that we envisioned we would be able to get to, we might not be able to get to as quickly as we could. So, you know, patience, things happen, uh, you know, take baby steps. Things, things will happen. We are doing what we can to address many, many different issues. What's, what's really important to some isn't as important to others. But, you know, that is the job of the mayor and council to get feedback from all the residents. We are listening. We, we understand. And, you know, there was an example, um, today of, uh, you know, I'll just talk to you about social media really quickly. Uh, you know, I, I check once in a while just to see what's going on, but I, I can't comment. Um, if somebody has a question and, and, you know, I have to say, we put our contact information on the website for a reason. People call me. I actually have a few more questions when the budget comes up. Some people don't feel comfortable, you know, speaking up. So email us, call us, let us know, you know, what you're thinking. But, you know, whatever it is, know that, you know, we want to hear feedback from everyone. And when we do try and, you know, institute some changes or, you know, lis- uh, listen to people, it, it's gonna, it's not gonna happen overnight. You know, things, uh, have to, uh, take a little time. So I would just ask for everyone to be patient. You know, the summer is, uh, we only have the one meeting a month, so we'll meet again in August. We will look forward to hearing from you all then. We'll, we'll pass the budget. And, you know, I thank the Finance Committee for doing a, a great job to keep things a, as steady as they possibly could. I thank Kelly for joining us here tonight and, and all, everyone else that, uh, the professionals that, that's joined in. So, you know, I, I just thank, thank you and, you know, thank the folks that, uh, attend. You know, encourage your friends and neighbors. Um, it's, you know, while we, we don't want to have to keep doing Zoom, unfortunately, uh, the way that the Open Public Meetings Act works, we, as much as we'd like to sit in Borough Hall, we can't go there and, and, you know, if it gets crowded, turn people away. It, it may not be ideal for a town hall yet, but, you know, we'll look at all these ideas. But, you know, in the meantime, it may be easier for some people to join because they can just log on to their computer. So, um, you know, I, I thank you all for your attention tonight. And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion to adjourn by Councilman. Okay, so we have a, uh, motion to adjourn by Councilman Freddy, a second by Councilman Lagotti, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you all very much, take care, stay well.